Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's seven o'clock. Time to begin our planning commission meeting for this month. We will begin by an invocation led by Commissioner Davis, followed by a flag salute led by Commissioner Wright. Please stand.
Father God, we pray for those in peril. Pray for all our troops. Lord, you want to give knowledge to the people who died in the airplane crash in Ethiopia. A lot of fine citizens. Lord, as we go through this tone, we pray that you guide us, keep us in your will. Lord, pray these things in the name of Lord Jesus Christ.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Gerba.
Here.
Commissioner Wright.
Here. Item one is the approval of the minutes of the meeting on January twenty-fourth. Is there any corrections or additions, or may I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt as posted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerba?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes. Item two is the visitor's section. If there's someone here that would like to address the commission about a non-agended item, now would be the time to do so. Seeing none, we will proceed. Item three is to hear a request by Davis Crabtree Properties LLC for a rezone from A Agricultural to RR Rural Residential, known as forty-four fifty-one North Richland Road, Yukon, Oklahoma. A tract of land situated within a portion of the northeast quarter of Section fourteen Township twelve north range six west of the Indian Meridian in Canadian County. And then we have the meets and bounds of this particular piece. Is there someone here to talk to this, about this?
Good evening. Phil Hagan with Crafton, Toll &amp; Associates.
Address, please.
Three hundred Point Parkway Boulevard.
Okay.
Yukon, Oklahoma. So, I mean, the intent of this is just to take this tract and break into four estate lots. They have drilled a test well. There's good, good water out there. Plenty of water, so.
So you'll be on well and septic?
Yeah, it, yeah, well and septic. Each one of them's over an acre, so it'd be well and septic and or aerobic, whichever.
And there's, you said that Test Water Well has been drilled?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have you, have you or your attorneys read our rural residential ordinance about the types of roads and found, and distances between properties and so forth?
He's talking about, Phil, he's talking about the ordinance that we've created for rural residential. He's asking if you've looked at all the requirements of that and understand those requirements for the road and so forth?
Uh, I guess so. I mean, is there, is there an issue that you wanted to discuss?
Well, there's, there's an ordinance that has, it lays out quite specifically as to the type of material and that the road has to be, has to have bar ditches. It has to be so far between residences. There's several ordinances. I mean, there's several rules and regulations, if you will, as to putting up a rural residence and getting approval here.
Right. This, we will meet the, we will meet the city standards on that, for sure.
Well, they're very, they're very explicit, and I urge you to get a copy of the ordinance and read it if you haven't got it.
Is there something in particular you're concerned about?
Well, we're starting, you're starting with a raw piece of ground.
Right.
And we just want it developed correctly according to the city standards and rules and regulations. That's what we're, that's what I'm asking.
The intent is to build it to the city standards, for sure.
The roadways have to be made out of
Correct.
so much material and packing underneath, and it has to have curb and so forth.
Absolutely, yes.
Any of the commissioners have questions for this gentleman?
What kind of residences will be out there, style-wise?
Well, this is a, I mean, Tommy Crabtree, Crabtree Custom Homes is the one doing this. So they'll be, you know, he's, he builds custom homes. They'll be very, very nice. You know, the, these lots are gonna be very expensive. They'll probably be half million dollar homes.
So they're gonna be twenty-five hundred square feet or more, something like that?
Yes, yeah. He doesn't build any less than that. He's a very established home builder in the Yukon area.
I got a copy of the ordinance. Do you want to take a peek at it? It's thirteen twenty-two. You can have this copy if you like.
Any other commissioners have questions for this gentleman? Okay. Someone here to read the draft motion?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Okay.
In the case of the rezoning application by Davis Crabtree Properties LLC, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings cited in the report. I remove that this item be recommended for approval to the city council.
We have motion and a second to approve this application, and with the understanding that he has got a copy of the ordinance and can follow along with it. Is there any other questions or any comments from the audience? Step to the microphone, please, and say your name.
Yes, I'm Jimmy Leatherwood. I live next door on the south side of it, and I know many years ago I built my home. It required a five acres for one home. So I don't know if that's still an ordinance or not. Something he might want to consider, I'm not sure.
Well, this is a five acre tract that he's dividing into four, four one plus acres plus the road, and it meets with the city ordinances on that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments? Call the roll, Kathy.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Gerba.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Item four is to hear a request by Davis Crabtree Properties LLC for a preliminary plat for five acres located at forty-four fifty-one North Richland Road, Yukon, Oklahoma. A tract of land situated in a portion of the northeast quarter of Section fourteen Township twelve north, north range six west of the Indian Meridian in Canadian County, Oklahoma being, and then we have the meets and bounds. So this is a preliminary plat for this five acres. Does any of the commissioners have a question for him now?
Go ahead.
Please step to the microphone and say your name and address, please.
My name is Jerry Bolden. I live at one-two-six-oh-oh Northwest one-hundred-twenty-second Street in Yukon. I own the land directly.
Mr. Chairman, she needs to slow down a little bit so we can get that into the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, would you speak right into the microphone and say your name and address again?
It's Jerry Bolden, one-two-six-zero-zero Northwest one-hundred-twenty-second Street, Yukon, Oklahoma.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, my family owns the land directly next to this property.
On the north side, or?
To the north.
To the north?
And we were just wondering, if this happens, how does it affect us in any way, shape, or form, like what we're doing on the land and things like that?
Don't say how it could affect you. I, you will have, there will be neighbors out there, obviously. And do you all farm that land to the north there?
We run cattle on that land.
Cattle. Cindy, is there any reason why it would affect her?
Um, there should not be any effect at all. It's residential, so unless they are planning on doing something specific on their property that would somehow impact your cattle, there shouldn't be any, any impact at all.
We were just wondering, you know, if it, it would change anything for us, since it's now zoned agriculture, we could still do, continue?
No, it's just this one piece that's gonna be zoned rural residential, so yours agricultural would still be in good shape.
At this time, it is, yes. And could I have a copy of the, the standards for the roads and things?
Oh, the ordinance for rural residential?
Yes.
Okay, um, I lost my train of thought. Um, any other questions on this?
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order. This rural residential zoning and preliminary plat, there is no water, city water or city sewer out there, so this is all well water. It's up on them, so, as well as the septic tanks.
Right.
So just want to let you remind everybody that.
Also, if it ever comes to a point when Yukon goes out there and has water and/or sewer available, you will be, your residents will be required to hook up. Isn't that correct, Mitchell?
Not sure if that's correct.
Well, if, if it does go by the frontage, then they're required.
Right. They would more than willingly hook onto the water. I don't think there's ever gonna be sewer out there, but if there is, I'm sure they would be more than willing to hook onto it.
Now, well, you're providing the fence on the north and the south side and the, and back to the west for these folks?
With straight zoning, I don't, it's not really required. And I, it's really gonna be up to the people that.
But when you're building and she's running cattle?
Correct.
You wouldn't want their cattle coming over on your?
There'll be a fence maintained, yes, whether it's hers or ours. But it's gonna be up to the individuals to, if they decide to do, you know, privacy fencing or?
Yeah, I'm more concerned about construction time and construction accidents and?
I'm assuming there's already a fence there. Is that correct?
Okay, if there's a fence there, y'all will have?
Mr. Chairman, have Mr. Leatherwood come back up. He's gonna discuss it.
If we're gonna discuss, well, I'll have to come back to the microphone. So is there a, is there a fence on your side, sir?
Yes, yes, I'm on the south side, and I've got a fence there. And the five acres that he's on, it's fenced on the, next to the road, Richmond Road, on the east side in my south side. But on the north side, there wouldn't be a fence between him or on the west.
Well, it's just open, because it was open field.
Yeah.
Mr. Can we require a fence be put up by this developer on the north?
I think Phil is going to discuss that.
I'm pretty sure we don't want their cattle running on the, in the yard. So if there's not a fence there, there'll be a fence there.
Yeah, like I said, she's got a bull or two.
If there's not a fence there, we will put a fence there.
Okay. It's all in that. I have a question.
Yes, sir. I noticed that, I thought these were ordinances. What is L one and L two? Little strips?
L one, L two's probably, has to do with the
Stuff like that in the slats.
The length of lines on the plat. It should be the table.
That's a line table here.
So that's not a piece of wood? Not an easement?
All right, further questions on this preliminary plat?
I just have one thing for staff, and that's on the ordinance, for staff to consider adding a specific prohibition to manufactured homes as a specific proactive line item, so we don't have to read into the ordinance that it says. I, I know it doesn't apply in this case.
Well, it kinda does, because I believe we're supposed to provide you guys with the covenants and restrictions, and it will be in the covenants and restrictions.
So you'll have an H O A?
No, not, yeah. I mean, what I saw is Crabtree. I do, we didn't have to worry about manufactured homes. But for, you know, for, to protect, so that property owners don't have to worry in the future with similar rural residential. I would say if you've been out on banner roads, you probably don't want to talk about that. These things can pop up. And so I think it would be good for our, to protect our existing landowners and homeowners, if we just go ahead and put in a prohibition to manufactured homes in rural residential housing. That way, when people come, they don't have to worry about what's going in next on property.
Okay. I, I thought we couldn't put one unless it was five acres and had to come before us. Am I wrong, Mitchell, or is that correct?
Right now, there's two ways. We have a trailer park they can go into, or it has to be agriculture zone with minimum of five acres to be able to install a manufactured home.
But it would take fifteen seconds for us to type in a line item and the ordinance, and then everybody that has this job after us will not have to worry about people coming before them.
Mitchell, is there a caveat for medical? I thought there was something in the ordinance regarding if there is a medical need, whether or not?
There is. If families on the same five acres, there is a possibility that they can move a manufactured home in there with a conditional use permit. So you could have actually two houses if you have an elderly parent or some other reason that you need to be there.
But it has to be five acres.
It has to be family, too.
Yeah, right.
It cannot be anything else but family.
Okay. Any other discussions on item four? The, come back up to the microphone, please. Wait, wait till you get there, so.
So if there's no existing fence and?
Talk to us, please, and?
If there's no existing fence, and we have longhorn cattle, bulls, you know, mothers and babies, which, you know, they can be aggressive. Um, there, a privacy fence is not going to work to hold, to restrain that type of cow, for sure. I don't know. Like I said, a five strand barbed wire fence with four inch h braces would be the, you know, what would be expected to hold animals of that type, especially them, any kind of cattle.
But you have that now, correct? You have that now, correct?
No, she doesn't have any of that.
Yes, we do. But the fence, the five acres has never been fenced off from us. We have a hundred something acres there, but it's never been fenced off, right? So it's just out there. So especially while construction and things like that, we don't want the liability of someone getting hurt, you know, because you could, and we don't want any of our animals to get hurt, you know. So we're gonna have to work that fence still out while they're constructing.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that you or your representative meet with them, come to an agreement on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they, I'm sure they don't want anybody getting hurt, and they don't want to hurt your animals either. So that's something that you two should come to an agreement on what needs to be put up.
How, how are you keeping them in now?
Well, we owned all of the land, and we agreed to sell five acres to his family, family by marriage or whatever it was. And anyway, that was a long time ago, and it's set and set and set. So no one ever came and fenced it off. It's just open to, into our land.
But it's not open to the road. It's open?
No, it's not open to the road, just to the remaining, I don't know, hundred acres. I don't know. There are. So I just want to make sure that we have a fence in place before they start the building, you know, that would hold an animal, any cow, much less a longhorn.
Mr. Can we make, or Judge, can we make some type of a provision if we approve this, that there will be a sufficient fence for livestock?
Mr. Chairman, I think you can amend your motion to include whatever type fencing that you think is appropriate, and that would just be part of your motion.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
We're not opposed to any of this. It just, I just, you know, for safety's sake and, you know, all, it just would have to be fenced off first.
Okay.
For the record, we are completely in agreement with that, so.
To make it clear in the motion, Phil, when would it be appropriate for that fence to be up prior to construction?
Prior to any construction, for sure, yep.
So just to put timing in there.
I got a problem with that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we have not approved the final plat, so there's still time and opportunity to do things here, so.
Okay, so this is just the preliminary, so I'll go ahead with you.
If she has cattle on her land and doesn't have a fence to keep them in, that's her responsibility, isn't it?
Well, there's a, there's a fence over to this gentleman's property, and they've just, they've just run cattle all these years.
Yeah, just before we bring the final plat?
The people in here shouldn't be responsible for her cattle and fence to keep them out of their land.
I would, I would tend to agree with that, generally, that if, if they're your animals that have free room, then it's generally your responsibility to make sure those stay on your property unless, you know, the new owner wanted to keep them off their property, that, then, you know, it would be on them.
These people shouldn't have to keep her cattle. I don't think, we're not, we're not talking about the selling of the land. We're only talking about construction. That's how we're talking. Go ahead, sir.
Just, prior to the final plat coming before you, we will have a, a written document with, agreement with her to have a fence in place. I mean, there's, that's not an issue at all.
Okay, yes.
Probably takes care, because the big piece of land, there, there's five acres, and I'm on this side, and it's fenced here and fenced along the road. So it's got fence on this whole property. Five acres was sold off, so when the five acres was sold off, the fence is absent here and here.
I understand.
So that's what it is. It was one field.
Yes.
That they, that they sold off.
Yeah, I under, understand.
So that's what it is. It, everything's fenced in, but since this five acres sold off, it's two portions of it.
So we're not talking about when he tries to sell a house. All I'm trying to get at, and I believe she is, is that during construction, they want to make sure their animals are safe. And you said on the final plat, when you come back?
Prior to the final plat, before I come before you again in the final plat, we will have a written agreement with her on the fencing, and my client will pay for it. Yes.
Okay.
So I'm not responsible?
That's correct.
Well, your cattle? It'll be until you two work this out.
I know.
Okay, go, hold to the mic.
When someone gets five acres and buys it, then you usually fence that land off, because you bought it.
He said, he just got through saying that they would pay for the fencing and it would have an agreement.
Yeah, I have no problem with any of it. I just?
Let's move on.
But you don't agree, Mr. Davis?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I think they're your cattle. You're raising them. They require a specialty fence. The fence should be on your property to keep your cattle in, keep it out of these people's property. That's just responsible ranching or farming.
Well, we've always been very responsible.
It's what?
We've always been very responsible. We've never done anything irresponsible.
I don't think you want their cattle, your cattle going into their property.
No, I don't want anyone hurt or vice versa. But we, we always take care of our fences. That's our main priority. Because we don't want anyone hurt or killed on the highway or anything like that. But it was, you know, we'll, if it's my responsibility to fence off that, then I feel?
I don't know. Maybe y'all sit down, work it out, half and half, something.
I mean, I'm a, ever.
We just don't, all I'm wanting it is during this construction period, and then after that, that would be up to the homeowner that buys it.
I just, it's fine with me. I just want to make it clear what I need to do, what they need to do, and we can certainly work that out.
I think we got it worked out here. All right, any other comments? On the rezoning only of a preliminary plat for forty-four fifty-one Richland Road?
No, it's not rezoning.
Pardon me?
It's not rezoning.
I'm not, I'm sorry. A preliminary plat, not a rezone. I'm sorry. Preliminary plat. Someone care to read the, uh, applicant, the motion?
I got it. In the case of the application for a conditional use permit submitted by Randy Thomas on behalf of Frisco Land and Properties, oh, no.
Wrong one.
I got ahead of myself. Uh, in the case of per, application for a preliminary plat for Davis Crabtree Properties LLC, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff recommendations cited in the staff report. I move this item be recommended for approval to the city council with the following conditions. The applicant shall revise the preliminary plat to include the names of adjacent property owners and the dimensions of the full right-of-way of Richmond Road. Number two, the applicant shall submit a letter of explanation detailing the timing of the subdivision improvements, including items such as grading, paving, tree planting, and walks.
Do you want to put anything in there about the fence?
No.
Okay. Is there a second?
All second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on this preliminary plat? Call the roll, Kathy.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Gerba.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Okay. Item five is to hear a request by Randy Thomas, Frisco Land and Properties LLC, Nautical Outfitter Corporation, doing business as the Tank Depot, for a conditional use permit located at Frisco Edition, number one, Lot one, Block one, Canadian County, Yukon, Oklahoma, also known as seventeen hundred West Vandeman Avenue, Yukon, Oklahoma. Someone here for that?
Good evening. I'm Randy Thomas. My address is one-twenty-six West State Highway one-fifty-two, Mustang, Oklahoma, seven-three-oh-six-four. I'm with Frisco Land and Properties, and I own the property at seventeen hundred West Vandeman, and I'm here on behalf of myself and my tenant, Tank Depot, to request the special use permit. If you guys have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
What are you using the property for?
It'll be a retail outlet for all kinds of tanks, different applications from something as small as a pressure tank that would go in a garage, to a big tank like you might see, not quite as big as a tank on an oilfield location, but we have a diagram that specifically lists the size of tanks and shows a layout of the property.
This is the old, um, ODOT property?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got a question. Mr. Thomas, the only question I really have is concerning, you know, these tanks, these are large plastic tanks, and they're pretty lightweight. My only concern would be in heavy weather, i.e. high winds, what are the, maybe some safety issues? I'm, I'm just a little bit worried about maybe some of these large tanks that are very lightweight and plastic getting airborne and, and let's say blowing out of your lot on a, on another property.
That's a question that I asked the company. My answer was that these tanks aren't quite as light as you think they are. Some of them even have triple bladders in them for protection because of the kind of materials that they keep in them. So not only are they pretty heavy and not affected by that, they've got eight different yards in the United States, from Florida to California and Texas, as far north as North Dakota, and there's been no problems that I'm aware of. I know that doesn't eliminate an Oklahoma tornado taking one away, but?
Mm-hmm. So it looks like the largest ones would be, it looks like ten thousand gallon? Oh, oh, that's ten, five thousand gallons. I'm just trying to find the biggest, the biggest ones that are on there. Oh, no, I take that back. Ten thousand gallons. Okay. And then all of these will be, they're empty. There will be no substances in any of these tanks while they're on the property?
No.
So, um, I mean, there's a mention of screening in the, um, screening the property from Vandeman?
A, a green vegetation, landscape, mention, yes. Something to kind of beautify that on the north side between Vandeman and the north boundary of my property.
Is it a, is it a? Is it a s- is it a s- we're just talking about grass? Were you talking about uh?
We're gonna put that together, Mitchell and Kathy and I, and in my mind at the moment, I'm kind of seeing possibly something like a hedge along that fence row. Just something to beautify that, make it look better. We're gonna leave some trees on the uh east side of the property. There's they're already there. We're just gonna work around them and clean everything up. Probably have a little picnic area in the northeast corner of the property, so that's going right along the west side of the city's water tower property. It'll come out there about the last trees that are there growing will be about half to a little over halfway going back south towards the interstate.
I think we're more concerned about Vandiment.
Yeah. Well, one of the things that we're kind of concerned about is the the history of the yard. That's one of the things we was gonna go out there and kind of uh. Look at because the history of the yard, the salt and so forth, we don't know how good the soil would be for growing any shrubbery trees or any other livings type uh landscaping. So that's one of the things we wanted to look at real close and there's a lot of asphalt out there too as well.
So is this something that needs to be brought back to us or is this a requirement in the ordinance to do this?
No, this was something we were adding to it. We felt like maybe to give it some kind of screening or buffer from Vandiment. It's one of the reasons we kind of come up with this idea.
So this is something that you could require?
This is something that we're asking that you require, some type of green re.
That we re- that we do it?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I see it's in the motion that, but it just says landscape buffer.
Yeah, and like I said, we didn't know what type of soil, you know.
I mean, the salt was.
Was for growing it with the salt and the sand and all that that's been.
The salt was just stacked on the soil when they were there.
Yeah.
Hey, Mitchell, I've got one more question too. It said the property must be cleaned up of any debris, concrete, dirt, et cetera.
They pretty well have cleaned all that up. There was a bunch of old broken up concrete that ODOT left on site when they left, a pretty good pile and he's been working on that and I think he's almost got it all gone, if not all gone by now.
We're getting there. We had a little equipment trouble, but we're getting it done. It needed to be done.
Yeah, it's some big chunks of concrete.
Is there any rea- like the city might be able to get ahold of that and use that for uh mitigation of, okay, okay.
We'd be glad to give it to you.
I just saw an opportunity, possibly like, hey, great, thanks.
Alright, any further questions? Anybody in the audience? Brian, do you have something? Please step up.
Brian Filippone, do you want my work address?
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh sixteen oh nine West Vandiment. Uh my property is right there. Um I think Nick, sorry, Commissioner, got a question answered. So there won't be any chemicals of any sort stored in these tanks? No? Okay. And then my other question would be traffic. What what is to expect coming in and out of that yard? Will they be big trucks, little trucks?
Up to the microphone, please.
Thank you.
There will be some large semi trucks. I'm assuming that's about a forty foot trailer, semi, they're hauling product in and out. Uh that would be the largest and then of course anything like a fifth wheel on a one ton dually, that kind of stuff.
Do you have room in the yard for them to come in and turn around?
That that was, yeah, thank you. That was gonna be my question is, you know, that corner can get pretty congested and so, you know, it it or will they be able to just pull straight in or are we gonna have to wade and? Open gates and move things and, you know, to be, because I I test drive, that's my loop when I'm driving the cars and, you know, so I'm just, I have no trouble with what you're doing. I just want to make sure. You know, what the traffic's gonna be like and that there's not gonna be anything stored in there chemical wise.
My answer to that is right now we've got lanes open in there so we can go in and clean up. They've set the inventory out. To be able to do that with loading trucks and hauling stuff in and out, very similar to what will happen when they pull in, like in any place where you keep an inventory. And then that's inside the fence of the yard. Maybe where you're talking about is in the front though, there's some more property we own that's triangled out in front of the building. That's kind of considered the parking lot. That's not quite big enough for a semi to turn around without having to maybe back up a couple of times, but it could be done. I think we've got, I think we've got plenty of room.
But if they if they pull in delivering, they'll go back and deliver, they'll have time, uh they'll have the ability to turn around and come out headfirst?
Yeah, sand or back up and pull out that same way onto Vandiment.
So the the only access to this is ba- it looks like it's on the uh the west side, kind of northwest side there.
That's true.
On the narrow end.
Yep. And that's the way it was done. I'm pretty sure when we platted it, we platted for that very reason.
Okay.
I'd say traffic is gonna be a concern, especially when we're looking at this area for the future.
But we just re- but we just rezoned and then on and off ramp.
Right. How how often do we expect trucks to come in and out of this property?
You know, it's hard for me to answer that for sure, but I would say it's possible that it could be daily. It couldn't be much more than that. Uh that's about the maximum amount I could think of. There's only five acres there, uh but there's enough room there to keep quite a bit of inventory, uh you know. That's probably the best answer I got for you on that. I I don't really think it's gonna just be an immense amount of traffic with with the semis. I think in general, we've got agricultural. Residential, commercial, and then oilfield type business. And you'll have guys pulling in there, buying a tank and putting it on the back of their one ton truck or their pickup or their work truck and and you might have a guy pulling there with the. Fifth wheel on a one ton truck with doodlies on the back and pulling a double axle flatbed trailer. And then that would be your customers, so to speak, and then maybe bigger customers again back to that forty foot. Flatbed behind a semi tractor trailer and there'll be forks lifts out there running and the yard will be flat and level where they can handle the material off and on.
It's gonna be a busy road in the future with an on and off going, an on and off uh ramp at Frisco. And then we've rezoned uh the majority of that land to the west there into uh. Uh C five, uh commercial, there could be a hotel or who knows what's gonna go in there, but it's gonna, it will, it's gonna grow with Yukon there.
Sure.
So that's what we're concerned about. I I know, I mean, we can't predict how much traffic you're gonna have right now. Are they gonna be manufacturing them or just just buying them there and storing them?
No, they're they're just retailing, selling right there, retail and wholesale, but no manufacturing.
Okay.
I mean, compared to Walmart trucks, we're talking about one thousandth of the semi traffic that Walmart does, so.
Yeah.
Now, this is really a small, I mean, I think most of your traffic's gonna be in your initial stock up, right?
Yeah.
When you bring all of your initial inventory, it's gotta be.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Thomas actually bought this for an investment for future development as well, so that's what his in intent is for this property.
Okay.
Well, I I realize it's not gonna run nearly the traffic that Walmart does, but we're towards the end of a V and, you know, with traffic and the tractor trailers trying to get into there. My concern is with the increased traffic coming down there, you know, if a tractor trailer or one of the, any of the trailers blocked the road for any period of time, the backup of traffic there as well.
I guess we can approach that through the traffic commission. If it gets to be a problem, they could make some of a time limit requirement like we do for. Uh the grocery store, they can't, you know, they can't bring in things after ten o'clock at night.
Mr. Chairman, remember this is a conditional use permit, so you can prohibit him from uh putting a truck in the road, loading it or whatever, so we can put conditions on him right here.
Conditional use, that's true, but uh get back my thoughts that like it used to be Albertson's and now.
Right.
Uh that backed right on to the housing addition, so those folks requested uh low level lights, which we put in. They also requested no deliveries after ten o'clock at night, so that's what we put on it, it works out. If this gets to be a problem, I think we could come back, because they have to come back every year on this conditional use permit, correct?
No, only if they do not comply with your requirements does it come back or we have issues.
Or if we have issues.
We have issues, we can come back.
So if we've got an issue with traffic, it can come back.
But this is a time, if you do not want him to be able to load trucks from the road, you can put that in there because that's something we don't really want and don't allow.
No, we don't want it, not on that road.
Mitchell, would it also behoove them to require a circulation plan? So that they could see that trucks could get into the property and do whatever their maneuvering needed to be on the property itself and come out headfirst?
Well, could there be another on and another entrance or exit put in on the east end of the property?
We try to, we're trying to limit our ingress and ingress points, so if if we can keep them here, but I think a semi can get in there because they they've had semis in there before. Without backing up, just to save that they can't back up, they have to go in and turn around the yard and come back out.
Those big salt trucks never backed up.
Okay. Any further discussions on this? Someone care to read a mom- uh motion on this and put some requirements in?
Yeah, I'll read the motion. In the case of the application for a conditional use permit submitted by Randy Thomas on behalf of Frisco Land and Properties and the Tank. Depot, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings, including all attachments cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval by the city council with the following conditions. Property must be cleaned up. Any debris, concrete, dirt, et cetera, must be removed from the site. The application must ins- must install, the applicant must install a landscape buffer along Vandiment and must be maintained. Staff will review and approve the landscape plan prior to installation. Applicant must comply with all approved tank layout exhibits throughout the life of the use on this site. Said exhibits shall be part of this approval.
Did I miss part of it?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Have further discussion?
Were we adding any comments other than that or is that it?
That's what I was, that's what I asked, is there further discussion? I'd like, uh Commissioner Davis, I think we should add that uh no trucks will be loaded or unloaded from the roadside.
How about applicant will avoid blocking Vandiment Road while loading and unloading trucks?
That works for me.
I so moved.
So you want to read it for the record, Bill?
Uh excuse me, Commissioner Da- uh Baker?
The applicant will avoid blocking Vandiment Road while loading and unloading trucks. Second.
Okay, now do we have a second on that?
Second.
Alright. Does everybody understand the motion? Call the roll, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Gerba.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Okay. Well, that concludes our business tonight. Uh. Do we have uh any comments from the commission? Anybody want to got anything you want to talk about?
Mr. Chairman, there's no new business tonight.
No new business? How about the staff? Y'all have anything that you'd like to bring up? Commissioners? Then our next meeting will be April the eighth. This meeting's adjourned.